Did you go to that show today?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I knew you did.
Oh, okay.
Did you go too? Did you go?
Okay.
I didn't know that.
I did not. I didn't even see an email to her. I'm a slacker board member. I apologize. I showed up for the babies.
You didn't see the one where I responded to that kid? You probably know. I'm just saying you probably did exactly what should have been done. I was the mess. But I think he sent it to everybody. He did. Okay.
I responded directly to him.
Oh, okay. No, I was just... Okay. So I wanted to make sure you did.
I did.
He didn't really ask for an RSVP?
No.
I was just teasing. I was just joking. You're bad joking.
Waiting for Mr. Brandon.
You gotta watch those bad jokes.
Do we need it? I don't know. Okay, do we have any more comment cards? There's one more? Okay. All right. So, well, that one person is finishing. We will get start... We'll go ahead and get started. Um, I am Patty McCoy. Welcome to our meeting. It is April 12th. It is finally a lovely day out. I'm going to ask my board members, starting with Ms. Chastain, to introduce themselves, please.
Good evening. I'm Lironda Chastain. Thank you so much for joining us. It's glad...I'm glad to see you out tonight.
Sean Wilson.
Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening. Anubam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Patrick Kehoe. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hi, Lauren Christensen. Welcome, everyone.
All right. Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening. Monica Merritt. Welcome. I appreciate seeing everyone here this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking our minutes. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Pies. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Welcome and thanks for being here.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
All right, we will stand and we will say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Action item 220460.
Madam President, in light of the recent video that's been circulating and concerns by parents and students in the district, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda for this evening to include superintendent comments and remarks first, followed by citizens' comments, and then we can conduct further board business at that time.
Okay, so Superintendent...
Comments.
Comments.
And then citizens' comments.
Comments first, and then citizens' comments next. All right. So, um, we would need...
Second.
A second. Oh, Patrick. Okay, um, I'm pretty sure that we need an action item for this. So it would be, um...
220465.
65. 220465. All right, it has been moved by Member Wilson and seconded by Member Kehoe that we amend the agenda to have the superintendent's comments first and citizens' comments second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. So now we will move on to the adoption of the amended agenda and approval of the consent agenda, which is still going to be 220460.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda, action item 220460.
Second. It's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Chastain that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. I will call for the vote, so we can...since we've amended the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. So Superintendent Merritt, you are up first.
Good. Thank you, President McCoy. Yesterday, I was able to share with our community a statement on the racist vile video that was recirculated throughout our community over the past two days and really share our commitment as a school district to work together to eradicate issues of hatred and racism and bigotry, was the message. But I want to talk to you right now, as not just the superintendent of this school district, but as a black woman, as a mother who raised two black students through this school district. Still, one of my students is currently attending this school district. And the lived experiences of our students each and every day. When we talk from our board table about the work that needs to be done to eradicate systems and barriers that are preventing all students, in particular, our black and brown students, from feeling psychologically, emotionally, and physically safe in our buildings. That's what the work needs to be. That's the work that we're engaged in. Throughout COVID, this has been the absolutely most divisive time in our community. And when I say to you, even as a black woman sitting here, the emails, the threats, the conversations that have come all of our way because we're continuing to advocate what's best for our students, it's deplorable. But I am encouraged this evening, as I look out across this room, because what I shared yesterday is there is so much work that needs to be done. Education is involved, and it must be the collective effort of our entire community. So I welcome the voices of our parents that are in this audience, but most importantly, our students. And it's my hope this evening that our students share with our community their lived experiences. And to sit in the events that occur oftentimes, because as I'm talking about one incident yesterday, unfortunately, that is not the only incident that our students have had to experience. And being able to bring that to the forefront, we have work that we must collectively do as a school district. What I shared is a comprehensive plan that we will unveil with urgency, beginning with community conversation. So you are here this evening. We need to hear from you this evening, but the conversation can't stop tonight. I need to invite you back to the table with your solutions, with your experiences, so that we could collectively work to shift and make a change. I believe that we will communicate as early as next week, our first community forum, in which we invite everyone that is here and get that word out to our community to come and let our students, our teachers, our families, our experiences shared. I can't talk in terms of details about the particular incident, but what I assure you to hear from my mouth, that we do not take any situation lightly. Every situation that is brought to our attention is investigated thoroughly. It is taken seriously. Any student involved will be held accountable according to our code of conduct. Law enforcement, if according to our policies, needs to be involved, absolutely, that is a step that we will take. In terms of any details, as you know, I'm not able to share, but I give you that assurance that this situation has been dealt with, but it's just not a check-the-box to say we've dealt with this situation. The work is...it's intensive and it must occur. We all have a moral obligation to our students, so that every single student has an experience that they deserve. I will say I was...went to the PCUP campus this morning, and we wanted to offer support for our students, and I wanted to be there myself. Rooms for students. When we think about racial trauma and the impact of trauma, the mental health of our students, what they are enduring silently every single day, wanting to make sure that they had a space to talk and get support. And I was really just overwhelmed because of members of our Black Student Union here today put on their Black Excellence Showcase this morning. And knowing the trauma that our students are going through and what they are experiencing, to see them rejoice and celebrate today, it warmed my heart, right? And it was the...really, to me, I said, that's not a coincidence. That's not by chance, that they continue to persevere and push through and celebrate their excellence. But they shouldn't have to do that. It...they should have a right to be in an environment where there's not fear and not fear of harm, but ability to succeed. When we talk about learning and preparing and thriving, that is our collective responsibility. So I say to you this evening, although again, I don't...I'm not able to give details, there is not an active threat, I will say, at our school at this moment. We have to continue to work, however, to change systems that are in place. Until the students that are before us here today and all of the students that will continue in Plymouth Canton can report feeling that they are emotionally and psychologically safe in our environment, then our work is not done. And so this evening, again, I welcome, as we listen to our citizens' comments, an active ear to hear from our students. Again, what they are experiencing in our schools each and every day, to hear from our parents and our families. And to gather again, because one person can't handle it alone, it must take the collective action of us all if we are truly going to affect change. I do continue to lift up this Board of Education, the work that we have done from the policy level. When you think about change, it has to begin at a policy level, and I am so proud of our equity and racial policy. I would put that up against any policy across the state and across this nation. And it's the implementation of that policy, which means that you're changing practices. We're changing curriculum. We are changing even the adults that are in front of our students as they influence their learning experiences to make sure that they are reflective of every student that is in front of them. That is work, that is lasting work, that we might not always see the impacts of on this day, but that will be the future impact that changes this climate and culture for our students. And when I say to you, if there's anything that is inspiring about our generation of students right now, although it is not their responsibility to change the world, when we talked even through the killing of George Floyd and how our students stood up to say, "This is not okay." And not just in Plymouth Canton, but in our world, "This is not okay, and we will see a change." We need to continue to work and champion and advocate for our students so they can be that change that we all need to see in this community. And so I appreciate you as a board. I appreciate our staff. There is work to be done as it relates to professional learning, because it is about education and we are committed to that work. You are committed financially, philosophically, and in everything, from your head to your toe, to improve this culture for our students, and I appreciate that. And again, collectively, we have to open up this conversation. We can't just say we're checking a box, but it has to continue. And again, it takes time, but I'm committed, as long as I am here, that I will not sleep until we continue to make that progress. And so for that this evening, we still have opportunities to celebrate in our young people, and our young people need to hear and recognize that we don't have all of the answers, but we have the full commitment to work together for change in our district. So with that this evening, I do want to, again, turn it back over to President McCoy to begin our citizens' comments, begin the conversation that I hope will continue until we're having a different conversation at this table in Plymouth Canton.
Okay, so when I call your name, you can come up to the podium. Please try to speak into the microphone so that it is captured. You can move it down if you need to. Mr. Brandon, we'll start the timer. We try to keep it to three minutes. The first one I have is Shar Willia.
Good evening. I appreciate your comments. I just have one question. How can we be assured, right? You're trying to reassure us, but how can we trust that assurance and recognizing that there are things that are not always transparent? I think we need a little bit more information. I understand you can't share specific details. Unfortunately, many of us are aware of the video made by, I believe it's [BLEEP]. And we just need some more information about what the plans are, what the next steps are. I'm not sure how we can give any assurance today. If we think about a lot of the instances that have occurred at other schools, there were precursor events, right, to these shootings and other acts of violence, and it's all because there were social...there were comments on social media that were not addressed. So it's a concern for me. So what assurances can we have?
Thank you. Just for the future, we're not gonna give out students' names during the meeting.
I'm sorry. I did consider that. However, when you make a video and post it on social media that is so vile, you should have no expectation of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Neal.
Good evening. Thank you again for allowing us to change the agenda so that we can make the comments we need to make. I'd like to start with just reading a bit that I got off of the student handbook regarding cyberbullying. Sending threatening messages through electronic means may be criminal in nature. Typically, schools will not be involved in the resolution of cyberbullying, which occurs outside of school, unless it creates a reasonable threat of material and substantial disruption at school. So clearly, I would think that all of what has transpired is a clear disruption of school. Therefore, so far in the media, I've heard, and I've heard it written in the notice from the school, that outside of the school, this was done outside of the school. Cyberbullying is electronic. It usually never occurs at the place where it may be a target. The student goes to this district. Therefore, any person that opened up that video became a victim of that specific student. Therefore, it should be completely outside of anything that anyone states regarding something being outside of the school. It happened outside of the school. It came across as if that meant, therefore, not too much would happen, at least when those people read, and myself, read that letter. Our students are fearful, considering everything that has been going on in our society today. There have been not only the flag of the post that the student has done, but it's also information floating out there regarding the family, which makes me feel like this has red flags all over it. So the fact that we keep hearing, "You all are doing things," but we don't know what those are. I have no idea if this student is still virtual, going to virtual school. Does this student get to participate in graduation? Does this student get a chance to still come, if they're virtual, still come to sports events? I don't want this type of student around my child who is so very apparent to be able to say whatever they want about killing people who look like me. So I think that the word that was also used was "recirculated." The video was "recirculated." We have no idea that that video was recirculated. It's recirculated right now? This is new to us. So "recirculated" means it was circulated before, and now it's being circulated again. We have no knowledge of that. So to us, it's brand new. And it concerns me that if it was recirculated, why didn't we know anything about this circulation to begin with? And the last thing I will add is it's our understanding that there was a group of people who had already been talked to. And whether or not they felt that this was a threat or not from this individual, if it was a private chat, somebody didn't feel like it should remain private, and they leaked it. Therefore, somebody who may have felt like verbally, I don't want to say, that I feel threatened or I'm concerned, felt enough and thought that it was vulgar enough to share it for someone to do something. So I implore all of you to do something, because really, we don't know what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Shavano Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your response to my email yesterday. Though I appreciate the district's communication yesterday, I don't believe it adequately answered the most basic question parents have. Is my child safe? If the student who made the vile threats to black students is still enrolled in PCCS, how can they be safe? All the students deserve to feel safe. All the students deserve to know their concerns, their voice, and their cries are heard, and most importantly, taken serious. I assure you, they feel the complete opposite. As an African-American parent of four PCCS children, ranging from elementary to high school, we have been here before. From videos of white students dancing in the blackface to students dressing in Klan's outfits for Halloween, to now threats of lynching any N-word in sight. The impact on my children is mounting and taking a toll on their mental health. As a district, you must, we must, do better. I still have a lot of questions around the video and how this was handled, but most importantly, is he still a threat to my children, our children? I'm asking the district, will my children be safe in school tomorrow? Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob Johnson? Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Jackson, and I'm the president of the Black Student Union. Today, I just wanted to really just reaffirm how normal this is for us. As students, I've heard some of my classmates laugh at the comments. The desensitization to this [BLEEP] is inexcusable. It's scary, and something needs to change. I encourage all of you, if you haven't attended yet, to come to some of our meetings, every Thursday from 2:45 to 3:45, to really just hear the stories of these students. It is sad, it is overwhelming, and it is, I mean, like I said before, it is extremely scary. I just, hearing, you know, the video was honestly not a shock, but it was just a reaffirmation that nothing's changed. I think that, you know, the students, they try to turn things in, and they feel like, you know, "I want to reach out," but they feel like nothing's being done, and so nothing happens, and they never do turn things in. And so it's just kind of a cycle of not understanding, you know, I understand privacy and not being able to, you know, communicate what really has been done. But for the students, it's feeling like nothing has been done because things occur over and over and over.
Lawrence Milgen? Milman, sorry.
So I'd like to share with you something that I heard from a currently enrolled PCUP student. This is for the folks that haven't heard before. I paint [BLEEP]. One, two, three, four. How many [BLEEP] in my store? I [BLEEP] hate them all. Let's lynch them with a [BLEEP] rope and then kick the stool. I'll stop every [BLEEP] I see. Or just shoot them, or lynch. Who cares? Alabama cattle ranch [BLEEP]. Knuckle dragging [BLEEP]. Cotton picking [BLEEP]. So this is what I'm here for. These words that are hateful and evil, tolerated and taught by bigots and cowards. These are the same words that give license to Travis and Gregory McMichael, Roddy Bryan, before they go out and kill Ahmaud Arbery. These are the same words that Lee Marat spoke before he took a bicycle lock and hit a young black teen in the face, knocking out his teeth and breaking his jaw in two places. Right here in Michigan, [BLEEP] don't belong here. These sentiments precede the action. To the district, I'd like to talk about formation of attention, which is very simply, what you attend to informs us of your values and which you will give effort to. So please assure us, the parents, that you did something more than the bare minimum, that you did something more than just say, "You know what? We're gonna give this to the police. We're gonna clean our hands of it and our conscience, and we're gonna have that deniability the police are handling it now." If your moral compass does not point you in the direction of honest mitigation, empathy, and love for the black student body, the black student body, our 14 and 15 and 16-year-old black bodies, assure us that you have addressed and are committed to addressing in these schools, the chronic and systemic hatred that these words and this video and other videos before exemplify. The great Rabbi Heschel has said that indifference to evil is as insidious as evil itself. We, the black parents, are here, charged with protecting and loving our beautiful black students' bodies. We want to help, but it's hard for us to help when it appears that the district is hiding hate from the light of day. Thank you.
Mylum? The child. The child.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Mylum. I am a chemistry teacher over at Plymouth. I have two kids in the district and I have many hats. One of them is I am the Black Student Union advisor. So I'm going to violate your rule, I'm so sorry. But I have two students that I would like to give a shout out to. Jacob Jackson, who just spoke, and Andy Gusway, who hopefully you'll hear from later. They put on a show today that some of you were gracious enough to come watch and I hope you enjoyed it. It was amazing. It was beautiful. I get to spend time with these kids all the time and I want to tell you that they spend time reflecting and learning and pushing themselves to understand levels of this conversation that a high school student probably should not have to endure so personally. They help kids, they help other students, and I'm very proud of them. They do great work. There are other students who do not experience that. And I want to draw attention to, when we move forward and do things here, we need to have conversations with some of our students who are not the ones that are impacted in the same way. That we need to be talking to students and going, how can we reach them so that they understand the gravity of that situation? Because me listening to that was not simple, right? When I grew up, I didn't hear stuff like that. And it catches me because to me, it's so new and I haven't had that same opportunity. Now, I've had recent opportunities, but our students, they need to understand the gravity of that comment. That student did not understand. Maybe I'm speaking out of turn there, I'm going to restrict that. But we need to have conversations with some of our students. And I think that one of the things that I really see a lot is that I think we should have some focus on athletics. Some of the cultures within our athletic programs, they have entitlement. I love sports. This is not a criticism, but like, we need to have some conversations with some of the things and look at some of the coaches who are really creating positive cultures with their students and athletes and replicating that and sharing that. I also just briefly want to add that you are all welcome, the clubs are in my room on Thursdays. You are welcome to attend. Just give me a heads up and we'll even have students talk to you about things. One of our goals for the next couple of months is to include more male students. And one of the students after our show today had mentioned that they would be happy to attend if it were during class. And I sat there and I thought, that would be great. How about advisory? And they said, absolutely. And so hopefully we'll get a chance to talk more, but I think that that was a great idea that they had and I'm hoping to share that with the right people and maybe you guys have some sway on that. We would like to share these students with more and more people to kind of have that, share that positive impact because they do a really good job. Andy and Jacob, you guys have done a fantastic job all year and I'm super proud of you. And I'm going to say nice things about you for 11 seconds because I can. Andy's in my class, she's a chemistry wizard, and Jacob is my president. And, all right, I'm going to stop there. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Gabrielle Allen?
Hello, everybody. I'd just like to share an experience that I've had. And this just started my freshman year in an English class when I was airdropped the N-word and nothing was done about it until I went to my black principal, not principal, but my assistant principal, and she did something about it, but my teacher didn't do anything about it. Security didn't do anything about it. That's just, didn't sit right with me, the fact that I had to go to my vice principal, who is black, for something to actually be done. There was many other experiences. I'm a junior. There's many experiences that I've had as a junior that started freshman year. I'm a very athletic person. I do a lot of sports at the school, four, and I've encountered many racist experiences that just aren't okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And then Andy Gusway? 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 Okay.
Um, thank you. I want you guys to see my face. I just wanted to speak with you guys today. I know you had the ability to come in and see part of our show earlier and some of you guys haven't, but there was an excerpt that I read that there's a portion that is pretty important. It is the part of, like, you don't know what the cut do, to feel that it has to be you. And this is so incredibly important because I know that some of you guys have not had the fear of yourself, your safety, your well-being because of the way that you look or who you are as your core identity, something that is visible, something that you cannot change about yourself. And for a lot of students at PCEP, this is the case. And especially when we talk about our black students. I know that we are the minority of the school. I believe there's only about 10 or 11% of our PCEP campus is made up of black students. And when we see videos like this circulate, we have videos of students saying the N-word, of threatening violence. And this is not something that happens once in a moon. It happens, it feels, every month or every other week where a video drops of black people in our schools with monkey sounds over them or of people online dancing and doing blackface that go to our school and very proudly show it in their Instagram bios or on their TikTok. And we see this representation of students of our school, of our community. And when swift action isn't taken, these students tend to view it as okay. They think, well, this person did it and they got away with it or nothing happened to them. Why can't I do it? And it creates this culture where nobody takes the accountability and nobody, because it's not handed out to them. It's not something that they walk up and they say, well, I said the N-word, I'm racist. You can expel me or you can suspend me or put me in a racial training course. People don't do that. It's something that has to be brought to them. And I can't even tell you in the past few days since this video has released how many times I've been called the N-word or how many times I've heard other students in the hallway, even just yesterday during my sixth hour, I was walking to class and I heard someone call someone the N-word with a hard R and I don't know who that was targeted at. But that's just an occurrence that happens frequently at our school. And when we have surges like this and especially when we don't know what's going on with the student and rumors spread about, oh, I heard they were suspended, I heard they're on virtual, whatever, it doesn't matter. When we don't have swift action after these events, this spreads even further. It's more than just a video. It's more than just a Snapchat that was taken out of context or a joke between friends. It becomes something that affects us on campus, day to day, in real life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that was our citizens' comments. We love to hear from our students because what we do affects your educational experiences. So thank you so much for coming out and being brave enough to get up in front of cameras and people you don't know to share your message. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And Madam President, if I can just say to the students and the parents, your cries have been heard. We understand and recognize that there has to be transparency, there has to be swift action, and that there has to be accountability at every level of this district. I can tell you that we've called for a meeting tomorrow, a closed-door session so that we can dig into some of the details as a board of education on this. Not that we necessarily believe anything wasn't done right, but at the end of the day, when something of this magnitude happens, we owe it to the district as a board to review the details because there could be some key learnings from this for the board, for the administration, for the district as a whole. But I can say to the parents and the students that there will be follow-up. Superintendent Merritt addressed that. There will be swift follow-up. There will be swift action to this. And this is something that if you look at the dynamic plan that the Board of Directors is responsible for really leading the vision of the district. And if you look at that dynamic plan, this is equity, discrimination. This is something that is at the very forefront of what we're going to focus on for the next five years. So I do thank the parents for coming out and championing your students' voice and beyond proud of the students who stood up today and let their voice be heard.
Thank you, Madam President. I had put some thoughts together that I was going to share at the end, but would it be okay if I shared them now?
Go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate Superintendent Merritt sharing the update about the disturbing viral video that was shared with the board a few days ago by various community members. It was quite shocking and disturbing. To sit there and watch and get that sickening feeling in your stomach, something I had not experienced. And to listen to you, that you have to experience this on a regular basis and to carry the heaviness as students is just unconscionable. It's something I cannot even imagine. I don't know how to quite express my concern, but do feel that I need to take a stand as a board member. This is why we need to continue to put more efforts into our diversity, equity, and inclusion work as well as our anti-racism work. We've worked on board policies and dynamic plan where we highlighted diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice, and anti-racism. Talking about it and creating policies is not enough. As a board, we need to do more and do better. We've had workshops on racial equity and racial trauma. We need to continue these discussions and take action on improving our commitment to our students around diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism. For those that think that racism doesn't exist are either in denial or unaware. And believe me, we get emails on a regular basis from community members who say, this doesn't exist. We know it exists. You feel it every day. No one should have to experience this type of hate, this racism, racist comments, threats, and harassment of any type. Our kids deserve better and we need to do more to support them. I'm committed to learning more on how we can collectively create safer and more inclusive environments for our students. I look forward to engaging in more community discussions around this so that we have a better understanding of what's happening and how to make things better at every level from students, staff, to community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam President.
Go ahead.
You should have known, right?
I did.
Yep. So I'm going to read a quote, but my comments aren't to the moms and the dads and the people who look like me. It's to our allies. To our white neighbors, our Indian neighbors, our Asian neighbors, it is to our allies. You could not imagine what it feels like to send your child to school, and maybe you do in part, with fear and trembling and dread. To know if your 16-year-old who just got a license is going to come home safe from driving a mile to school. Or if your daughter is going to have a positive image of her beauty because she isn't told she's beautiful. And so I am asking you all to stand up. I am asking you all to say not enough, enough, enough. Because you can influence circles that I cannot influence. You all are in conversations that people won't say and do things in front of me, but they will in front of you. If we are going to make a change in this community, for all of our students to feel safe, for all of our students to advance academically, to create a culture of safety, it cannot be borne on the backs of black students and black moms and black dads. You all have to carry the torch. Racism is not a black person's problem. It is the problem of this community. It is the problem of people who are not wrapped in brown and black skin. So I am asking you to join with us to end it and to create a culture of safety for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent Merritt, do you want to take us through the consent agenda?
All right, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have new hires, leaves and resignation, tenure recommendations, and our regular meeting minutes from March the 22nd, 2022. This evening, we also have first reading following policies. 3362-4362, anti-harassment. 5341, emergency medical authorization. 5342, do not resuscitate orders, DNR for minor students. 54, 5343, physician order for scope of treatment. 5517, anti-harassment.
All right, thank you. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take a moment to introduce you to three new teachers in our district. So if the three of you could come up to the front, please. So it is an honor to introduce you first to Eric Newton. Eric is our new resource room teacher at Plymouth High School. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Madonna University and a master's degree from National University in California, plus over three years of experience. So welcome, Eric. Next, I would like to introduce you to Jamie Nowak. Jamie is our new middle school academic behavior support specialist at Discovery Middle School. She comes to us with a bachelor's and a master's degree from Wayne State University, plus an MA plus 30 from Spring Arbor College and over 21 years of experience. Welcome. Next, Julia Vaula. Julia is a new elementary teacher at Erickson School with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University and over seven years of experience. So Eric, Jamie, and Julia, thank you for choosing Plymouth Canton Community Schools and we know that you will be champions for our students. Welcome. She's got candy. Okay, next, I would like to share with you the tenure recommendation of Belji Carr. She is not with us here this evening because she's working at Starkweather. She also is part of the Starkweather Adult Education Program in the evening. But during the day, she is our English Language Development Teacher for the Virtual Academy. And here's what Amanda Pulakis would like to share about Belji. I am honored to recommend Ms. Belji Carr for tenure. Ms. Carr has been working with the Virtual Academy for the past two years. She is an exemplary teacher who is reflective of her practice and seeks opportunities to enhance her students' learning. Her enthusiasm, dedication, and commitment to her students are to be valued. She has been a contributing member to our staff and is well-respected by our student and parent community. So congratulations, Belji, on receiving tenure this evening. Thank you.
All right, we are down to B, which is celebrating success. East Middle School Chess Team's state champions. Mr. Wilson will be doing this.
Good evening. If I could have our three students join me at the podium? Thank you. So celebrating success this evening will honor three young champions who recently made checkmate history for PCCS. I love how Nick writes. East Middle School students Anthony Chen, John Das, and Drew Hen Das competed as a team in the state championship for chess and won first place, marking the first time in PCCS history that East students brought home a chess state championship title. Y'all make some noise for that. But we're not done. To make matters even more amazing, the team won the championship despite being at a slight disadvantage. The evening before the competition, the fourth member had to unexpectedly withdraw from the competition. Anthony, John, and Drew Hen went on to post an undefeated 4.5 score in five games, which made up for the zero score the team received on the fourth board in each round for the missing player and swept the remaining matches to take the championship. Obviously, this is very impressive achievement as a game of chess takes a lot of focus, strategy, and patience. East Middle School Principal Ted Youngless was not able to join us this evening, but he has written the following: but he has written the following tribute about the team's success. "Our East students battled with absolute grit, passion, and focus, and went undefeated in the matches they played, earning a score of four-point-five in five games." It is believed that this team is the first chess team to ever win the state tournament with only three players. That is incredibly impressive, and the whole East Middle School staff could not be more proud of them. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I present you three with the Stars Award for Students with Tenacity: Achieving and Reaching Success for the Success in Chess State Championship. So we would love for you to make a few comments, but can we make some noise for these three?
Thank you for doing all this, and this is a great game, and I hope to continue the chess culture at East Middle School.
Well, it was a team effort, and we all tried our best, so there's really not much to say about it.
Thank you, and it's an honor being here.
So lastly, I just want to say we'll be hosting you guys for lessons to the Board of Directors playing chess. But once again, if we can just really commend these gentlemen. Once again, you know, what I really love about it is it speaks to you never give up. At the end of the day, you're a man down, and they still pulled through the victory. And I think that's a lesson that both students and adults can learn from. So thank you, guys, for being an amazing example for the entire district. Thank you.
All right, next up is Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. So I have my statement I'm gonna read, and then I'm gonna go through the rest of it. Like many in the community, I'm aware of the video that circulated over the weekend. As a parent and educator, I was shocked by the rhetoric, and I'm saddened by the harm being done to our students. As a parent, I did not have to worry about the safety of my children. My children were given the benefit of the doubt in every situation. I never worried that they would come home safely or that people wished them harm just for being there. As an educator, I have witnessed the racism directed towards my black and brown students. I have seen the harm it causes and the fear that they live with every day. The school board, all of us, we take racism and the threats of violence very seriously. We know that our students need to feel and be safe in order for them to learn and thrive in our schools. We recently approved our dynamic plan, which is the five-year blueprint for the district. One of our most important strategic themes was equity and inclusion. We are firmly committed to providing an educational, equitable educational experience that is safe for all of our students in the district. We are committed to this as a school board and a district. We also have done quite a few things as a Board the past couple of weeks. Ms. Chastang, Mr. Keough, Ms. Sedoo, and I, along with Superintendent Merritt, Mr. Tiskowitz, and Mr. Ruggiero, we attended the School Safety Forum at the Park, which is the old Central Middle School in downtown Plymouth. Director Meyer sat on the panel with law enforcement from Canton Township, Plymouth, and Plymouth Township. It was well-attended. Quite a few of our students attended, and quite a few of them had comments about, a big topic had been the lockdown, about how it made them feel, the things that they would like to see. So it was always good to have our students talking about their experiences of safety and security while in school. Last Thursday, Ms. Chastang and I attended the Wayne County Association of School Board Meeting. It was a presentation, after the budget was voted on, there was a presentation from the Lincoln Park Schools on their Resilient Schools Program, which they implemented to increase their student achievement and decrease punitive student discipline. It was very interesting and informative and a good way to interact with other school board members around Wayne County. And then today, Ms. Sedoo, Ms. Chastang, and Mr. Wilson were able to attend the Black Excellence Showcase that was put on by the Black Student Union in the Salem Auditorium, and they said it was fantastic. So sad that they do it, it's all during the school day because not everybody can attend, but glad some members were able to go. Earlier tonight, Mr. Keough, Ms. Sedoo, and I met with Ms. Rail. She walked us through some of the early middle college funding. It was very interesting. Looking forward to this opportunity for our students in the near future. A reminder, the Board Governance is tomorrow night at six-thirty, and there was a brief video sent around. And also, SJ five-k registration is now going on. If you would like to make sure you are guaranteed a T-shirt, register by Sunday. Thank you. Next up, we have Student Performance and Achievement with Ms. Sedoo.
Thank you, President McCoyn. We had a really robust long meeting. We looked at, I don't know how many, fifty, sixty pages of data around high school credit attainment for our high school students for first semester over the last three years. We saw concerning data about the continue to persist and get bigger with our kids of color, particularly our black African-American students, students with IEP, and other subgroups. A positive observation is that the areas of English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies, the percentage of Semester One credits earned increased from last semester to this year. So we are heading in the right direction for a lot of that. However, this was not true for math, and the team is working hard to look at what's happening there and to ensure that those credits continue to get better. In addition, the team made observations about ninth-grade students, male students, black and African-American students, and students with IEP were more likely to not earn all attempted credits than their comparative demographic peer groups. During the discussion, Superintendent Merritt and her team shared some of the programs they are evaluating in order to improve student outcomes, which include looking at enhancements to the advisory time and how to better utilize that based on staff and student feedback, along with providing additional support for students that need it the most. They're also looking at what program and investments are working and what's not, and reallocating resources to bring about better student outcomes. Other discussion topics included focusing on culture, climate, success coaches, interventionists, and instructional and assessment practices. The data was shared with all Board members, and I encourage all Board members to look at that because it is quite concerning, and we will not be bringing that to the whole Board, unlike NWEA. So I'm just letting you know that it is out in your email to take a look at it. Our next SPA meeting is May fourth in this room at five o'clock, and I encourage all of you to attend. Thank you.
Next up is Policy. We have not met since the last meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, which is in two weeks, five-thirty. It is in the collaboration room, which is way down the hall. Everybody is welcome to attend. And I would briefly like to again thank Doctors Lilly and Dr. Vartanian Gibbs. They did the lion's share of the work on our racial and educational equity policy, and we really appreciate their hard work on that. And then, next up, we have Finance and Operations.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, the seventh, and we reviewed the, some of the projects that we'll see coming up on the agenda this evening, including the furnishings for the EL-two project. We had an update on the second half of the HS-two, that's the Plymouth High School Auditorium that's being built and the process that's going on for that bidding process. Then we also discussed the potential purchase of the pilot project, or the pilot drive property that will be coming up, and we'll hear a presentation this evening. We also, lastly, we reviewed the budget assumptions that is part of the process and that will be discussed this evening. Those are the foundational processes around projections on student enrollment and funding processes and some of the baseline assumptions that go into the budget activities that are already underway. Our next meeting is Thursday, April twenty-first. It's at five PM in this room, and we welcome the community to attend.
All right, thank you.
One last thing. I would challenge my fellow Board members to join me in sponsoring the SJ five-k. It may be too late to get our names and logos on the T-shirt, but we could certainly make a difference into that activity and that event. And then the question is, is how much money? Are we gonna be a bronze, platinum, silver sponsor? Okay, so afterwards, I would like to have that conversation. I'm already part of another group that is a title sponsor, so, you know.
All right, we are down, we are up to D, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Merritt.
So we already have mine in the amended agenda?
Okay, just wanted to make sure in case you had anything else.
I could always have something else.
Okay, you're gonna yield your time? Okay. Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Good evening. We have four presentations this evening, so we'll try and go as efficiently and succinctly as possible. The first presentation is from Kristin Hennessy, our Director of Nutritional Services, and Frank Ruggiero, our Director of Partnerships and Engagement. Thank you. Sorry, Frank. They're gonna talk about our Local Wellness Assessment Policy Review, and he has a short presentation to share with you this evening.
Good evening. Hello? Am I on? Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay. It doesn't, I can't hear myself, so it's a little bit different. Good evening. Bear with me a little. So it's been a long time since I've stood in front of you, but I look forward to sharing with you the results and bring back to you the results of the Triannual Wellness Policy Review. So let me give you a little bit of background and purpose with this. In two thousand and six, it was decided that every school district had to adopt a wellness policy. And then in two thousand and ten, it was decided that, under the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, that it shouldn't just be a standalone policy, but it actually should be a tool. And I like to always call it a living, breathing tool, because the last two years, it certainly was one, because it had to change as waivers changed and expectations changed. So it's actually a policy that gives us a guideline, and from that, we develop goals in terms of supporting that policy. And so within the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, it said that we had to evaluate it and do an assessment, and that assessment would come from the state, and we'd use their guidelines or their template and do an assessment on how we're doing within our goals. Well, that assessment, of course, the last one we did was in two thousand and seventeen. It came up in two thousand and twenty. We all know what happened in two thousand and twenty. We all like to forget, but it did happen. They gave us a reprieve and said you can have an extension. And then came two thousand and twenty-one, and we looked at it as a group, and we said, you know what? Even though we have this extension, and we could have done it into this year, let's still dig in and reflect before it becomes forgotten. What goals were we doing? Because you know what? We're gonna come out of this, and we still need to be strong, and we still need to look at how we're gonna transition. And so this is where I'm gonna turn it over to Frank and tell him, when we started to build this, we knew we had to do the assessment and talk to you about how we brought the group together to do that.
Thank you, Kristin. Superintendent Merritt, members of the Board. My role on the Wellness Committee was really to act more like a general manager, with the assist of Jennifer Boss, who's actually in the back of the room from our team. We were responsible for selecting committee members and scheduling the meetings and making sure the work got done. As we scheduled the team, we followed a template that the state of Michigan gave you to make sure that you got the right people on your team to make sure the work was done right. That work, so as we reviewed the template they sent to us, it was really obvious, obviously, parents, students, staff, at all levels, was important. But we also took a look at making sure that our group was diverse. We had a mix of experiences, people with different experiences. We had obviously some PE teachers, some people from the Food and Nutrition Services staff, and we made sure that we had, that the parent population reflected the work that we were doing as well. We also addressed our Parent Council and had a couple of members from the Parent Council. And overall, we were very pleased with the team we picked. They all worked very hard and really participated with us. So please be aware that when we started this work, it was, actually, our first meeting was scheduled the week that COVID shut us all down. So at that point, none of us were really all that proficient with Zoom. We were just kinda learning how to do it. But we kind of trudged our way through that and had our meetings and really made progress right off the bat. The state also gave us a template into the areas that we needed to evaluate as far as wellness is concerned, the program was concerned, and this made it much easier for us to do our work. Again, we did have several meetings together, but then, as the template suggested, we broke into groups, and we kind of split our, split our experts into the groups that fit them the best. Those groups went off and met and then reported their results back to us, and we worked with Kristin to produce the final report that you have in front of you tonight. So I'll turn it back to Kristin for the rest of the report.
Thanks, Frank. So what I have on this slide before I start to dig into it is just really the overview of the different categories that were brought back to us that we needed to look at what our goals were to support within our wellness policy. The wellness policy, to remind you, is very broad, but it does really have substantial information in it to give us a tool to make sure that we're on track to give our students a healthy lifestyle, both from a physical activity standpoint and also, you know, my favorite saying, "A well-fed child is a child ready to learn." So it definitely, we made sure when we went forward with this, we kept this in mind when we broke everyone into groups, to keep foremost that we were conscious that we were keeping the integrity of our policy true. So let's start with the highlights of the nutrition and promotion for education. One of the things that we speak to in the policy, and we came back to and the committee discussed, was how did we meet the goal that we wanted to have all of our cafeterias be a learning lab? And we looked at that through different lenses, and one of those lenses were not only the aesthetics of it, because we've really invested in that to really heighten that and make sure that there was positive messaging and good messaging that reflected not only the nutritional side, but also physical activity and to stay healthy. But we also added the aspect of good behavior and respect, because we feel that the amount of time that they're in there and as they're sitting in there socially, that we need to remind that. We've gotten all the cafeterias, including the Park, completed as of this December, which I'm excited to say. And that has really come back to be a real positive. And so we were able to report out from this group that that's one of those goals that I'm not gonna say is ever shut, because I think that's evolving. You constantly need to refresh it, and you need to keep it updated on what's hip and what's good and what they'll respond to. Also, one of the things that we found in doing this, one of the goals that we needed is we needed to be viable, and what was the latest way to communicate to our community and our families? And so you'll see here, we talk about an information board, and that became one of those things that it talked about, how do you get information out and you make sure? On this information board, we know that we have to be able to be quick. Is it a QR code? Is it mobile? And is it still that you can just go on our website and find it? What are the ways? How many different ways can we make information available so that our families have the ability to find free and reduced information? They can find the menu? And more importantly, they can find nutritional information that has allergens. Now, I'm going to tell you really honestly, this last year, this has been one of our biggest challenges. And so when we were looking at this as a goal as a team, this became a big challenge, because with supply chain and everything so changing last year with COVID, this was one of the things that just, as I talked to the group, I said, this is hard, but we keep on top of it. And I have, I had a registered dietitian on staff, and that was pretty much her entire job every day. When food was different on the truck coming in, she was on the phone, and thank you for the nursing staff. She could make changes on the spot to ensure the safety of our students. Also, what comes with creating a good environment for healthy promotion and education is your staff has to be educated. It's one thing just to say I can cook well, and I can serve it well, and I can present it well. My staff has to go through many hours of professional development, and that means they have to know what's on the tray. So when we looked at this through the lens of goal, we looked at this as we don't want just the base on what they should have for ten hours a year. We want to go to the higher. So we always strive to create an environment where they can always strive to be higher. In fact, we've challenged this year to become certified. If you want it, I will support you, and I will have you become school nutrition certified. And I'm happy to say that I have members that have achieved that this year. So that's one of those goals that you constantly put it out there, because they are professional. So that's one of those goals that you constantly put it out there, because they are professionals and they do thrive. And the more that I can encourage them on that line to take ownership of that and teach our children what is healthy, the better it is. Next came, I don't know what happened in my picture here, probably because I put it in, not Carly. Sorry about that. School, physical activity and other-based activities to promote wellness. I'm excited to say that we have really strong teachers and, in our district that provide physical activity. And one of the things in our policy that this addresses when we look at goals is both not only when they're in school, but outside. And I think I heard when I was sitting back, there was a challenge for the SJ5K. So I think that that's a really important one to elevate again. We need to be really proud that as a community, and it speaks in our wellness, in our wellness policy, that as a community, that we have a community-based physical activity. And we do. And that's something that we need to be very proud of. And that was one of the goals that came out as we talked about it as a group. Wow, we are ahead of that. There's not a lot that can say that, but we rally around that and that's a strong one. I also wanna elevate that in the goal finding and the research that the team did. They said, you know, we have to get back, as we come out of COVID, we have to get back to recognizing that each of our schools also provide a fall and spring after the fact, type of, I hope that's not my phone, after the fact, walking club or bicycle events that are after school. So it's important to know that we need to make sure that those events come back into the schools and that those take place. And I'm starting to hear that more and more we're scheduling those as things become safe. I wanna reaffirm that it's very specific in our policy that we have highly certified and qualified teachers that teach our physical education. And we do, we strive for that. Also, probably written for me, I am not athletic at all. I don't have a bone. I'm lucky that I can walk in the shoes I have on right now. But that planned instruction is, a physical education shall meet the needs of all students and remain inclusive. This is in our policy and this needs to remain very, very focused on. And I tell you that this was a very big topic when the committee came together and said, this is ongoing and that this is something more and more that we look to when we create plans and, and what we do in our classrooms settings. This is an exciting one. This was one that came from a community when we were getting together right before COVID and had been in previous wellness committees. It's been thrown out as a challenge to me as a goal to apply for a grant. And at that time, we weren't technically eligible for it, but I thought, I'm gonna put in for this. And this is a 10 cents a meal grant, which for every meal I serve that is a Michigan food, primarily fruits and vegetables, we will get 10 cents a meal, up to a certain amount they give me, for what we use that is a Michigan-made fruit or vegetable. Well, I am happy to say that when we did this assessment, we weren't approved, but we did get awarded that grant. So that's one of those goals that we have achieved as a district. And I'm happy to, to share with you that just recently, we are actually bringing in spring mixed lettuce to do in our salads from a hydrophonics farm that, so that we can show our kids that we can mix it up a little and bring in peaches and some other things when it's available through these, these companies that are able to give us these fruits and vegetables that are actually Michigan products. Next is the nutritional guidelines for all fruits and, for all foods and beverages. Truly, this is probably where my passion comes and you'll, you hear me the most. This is where my biggest statement is. A well-fed child is a child ready to learn. This is where it's important that we make sure that we meet all the demographics and all the needs of our children. This has been a struggle the last two years because of what it's changed for us and what we could do within the waivers and within the restrictions of what we could do, given the circumstances. But we did the best we could. So we are so excited to move forward with this goal and continue on the great variety and momentum that we had going into this pre-COVID. And as long as supply chain doesn't hiccup me a little bit, which it probably will, but we've always gotta plan A, B, C, D, enough. And I'm sure whatever else I have to use in the, in the alphabet, but it's always there. This is really important to us, because we heard back as we talked to students and surveyed them, that they really wanted some of the food to reflect what they were used to seeing at home and what their tastes were. And this is important that I maintain a registered dietitian that can make sure that even if we bring those foods, that it still meets the level and expectation to make it allowable through the USDA guidelines for the National School Lunch Program and Breakfast Program, because that's what supports us, it's a federal program. And so we need to make sure that we can still maintain the reimbursement for that to support. And again, going back, it also, we need to make sure that we are protective of those allergens and that they're online and the nutritional information is online. It's, that's very, very important. I also wanna speak to à la carte. This is where we have to do smart snacks. And smart snacks, everyone says is, oh no, here it comes, everything's whole grain and everything. Yeah, smart snacks have a criteria, but you know, this is also a learning moment for our students. As much as it's a struggle to talk about fundraising and that we can only have two fundraising events and that it has to be within what a smart snack is, I tell you, I enjoy this and as I talked to the committee on this, I said, this is really a great tool for teaching our students. I work with the marketing classes at the park and this is actually part of what they do. Anything that they want to sell within their stores, they need to, to put it through the smart calculator. So this is teaching them that sometimes when you run a business, you run through some obstacles on things on what you can and cannot sell, you know? There's variables out there. Not everything is just doable. You need to look at it and there's different price points and such. So when I talk about smart snacks and the criteria, we talked about how we roll that out with the committee and how we teach not only our administrators, and, cause I have to teach them on how they have to log their fundraisers, but also how we partner with our student groups that wanna do fundraisers or our school stores that wanna do fundraisers. Once again, this doesn't stop at that level. Every year, I do a renewal and we've talked about how we can always lift that back up and how it has to be important that every year, it's an ongoing goal that we reach, because we always have turnover in administration, and how we reach that new administration about any new ruling or anything new with the smart snacks and what's allowable. I also like to provide them, and I shared that with that committee, I like to provide them a new, fresh list. Cause you never know when something like a new ice cream might be allowable. So I always like to give them something to go buy. The next is guidelines for food and beverages available on school campus but not sold. This is one that is emerging. This is one that we begin to work through. And when everyone asks me what this is, this is something that we put or we encourage within our K-12 handbook. This speaks to really talking about, rather than food rewards or incentives, to look for other ways to celebrate successes within our schools. Because it's important, we've always been used to, well, let's do this candy or let's do this. And again, that comes back to some danger zones of what can be brought in. I know different schools have adopted different restrictions or different things that can be brought into the schools for the safety of their students. We continue to work with all of our schools to create lists that they can get stuff from us when needed, if they'd like to, so that it runs through that smart snack and it's safe for all students in their schools. And also come up with creative ideas. Every time I'm at a conference, and I shared this with the committee when we came back together, I said, I bring back ideas of things that I hear about of new ideas for class parties or incentives that they can share with their teaching staff. Because I always feel bad when I say, I know, it's not the same cupcake. I know, it's not this. But you know, as times change and people begin to eat more healthy, there's things coming out that are great that we can do. Also, it talks about, well, maybe it's time just to do these things after school if you're gonna have a birthday party or a get-together and retime it to a different time period. But again, this is something that's been evolving, that we've been working on to communicate to our parents or families before it even starts in the school year. So it is part of our K-12 handbook. Marketing and advertising only foods and beverages that meet the smart snacks. You know, we have to really be aware of this. This is another area that we've done very well in, but we really need to be aware of what we are promoting. You can't necessarily have a Mountain Dew on the front of your vending machine, but you're promoting drinking water. So we really have to dive deep into this. And that was one of the goals that we discussed with this group and the group came back. They said, it's great to have vending machines, but we need to make sure that our vending machines reflect what our policy says. And our policy says, if the vending machine is gonna have something that doesn't follow it, then our vending machine needs to be off during the school day and only on during the times that it can be on when school is not in session. So it's something to look at and it's something that, again, is trained and something that we share with our schools that do have those vending machines. But it's also making sure that we're not just allowing any marketing coming into our schools and that that's vetted through our communication department to make sure that it's appropriate and that it's set in the right tone for our school and that we're controlling what the messaging is, not letting an outside source control it. All outside food and beverage contracts, they all need to be reviewed and renewed. They all need to have the ability for us to look at those and make sure the language is in there, that they're held accountable for what they put in there. So if they're going to be on during the school day and there's any access, that they're in the right locations and that they have the right product in it. And I do stay on this quite a bit. I, I think that there's some that don't like that Debbie's winking. She goes, I'm always on that. And I think I've already spoken the advertisement directly to the students. I think that sometimes that can get away from us. And if we're promoting healthy lifestyles and healthy living, we have to start to recognize that it, it can't constantly be promoting, constantly eating or drinking the wrong things. I just wanna say in a summary, the summary of the committee, the overall committee's recommendation evaluation, and we'll be sending this into the state, is the committee's evaluation was that the district, we are strongly actively obtaining the goals to our model wellness policy. And we're very, we're modeled after the Michigan State Board of Education model. We are right in line with that model and we are modeling well and our goals support that model and also our own policy and what we do. The policy, we do say, needs some, its content is there, but it's a little bit, we feel that it needs to be some shifting around, because we feel that maybe some parts are here and here, because as the policy was developed, new federal laws came in and so statements were put in. And so there might be a time for it to be reorganized, was the recommendation actually from the committee, that it could just be reorganized, nothing added, but reorganized so that it read a little bit easier. I think this was the important statement that came from them. Reinforce the need for balance of diet and exercise to maintain a healthy lifestyle. And that really says it all, I think, when we look at our policy and the tool that it is for us to succeed. That's it.
Mr. Brooks? Do you have any questions, comments?
No, I don't. It was a great presentation.
Ms. Chastain?
I do not have any questions, but thank you so much.
Ms. Christensen?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Keigho?
I have one question. So first, I wanna thank you for the presentation and I wanna make sure I understand the rules around food that is available in school campus but not sold. So this is classroom parties and other things like that. The, the food needs to comply to the standards that are, that are part of the process. How do we communicate this to families so that they, they understand the, both the purpose and the process and everything that's involved? Cause I can imagine that, that from when they went to school.
Right. So many, many of our elementaries, that's really where it's the biggest, the biggest. And what our principals have done to be proactive, and they started this years ago, is they've really put structure around that and put a list. And then I've created a list that parents can purchase from us if they want. But that's part of their back-to-school information on what's allowable to bring in. So they set together a list that's already updated in those elementaries and I support that. It's also in our student handbook that we encourage that, or we recommend, I think the word is, and Kurt can probably, we could, we can check on that for you and get back to you. But there's verbiage in there in reference to what is allowable or what is expected if you're going to bring something in. But I will tell you that in working with Maureen and her group, that is something that has been very, very strongly encouraged across the board, that it's put out immediately in the forefront of the year. And the teachers have actually, actually come back and thanked us because it creates them from having to be the first line of having to stop anything that might not be appropriate.
You used the word recommend, because it sounds like this is a requirement. I wanna make sure.
Yes, it is. And I think that, I think, yes.
So if the word is, if, if, if it actually is a requirement, we may need to revisit our student handbook to make sure that it's not a recommendation, it's a requirement.
And I, and again, I'd like to check and make sure that I, I could be phrasing it incorrectly.
It's fine. If we can just take this as an action item to follow up and see what it is. And then the, related to this, you implied or said something that this is only during the school day. Is that correct? Is, is that, do we have more freedom or flexibility?
Yes, so 30 minutes after the school day until 30 minutes before opens, these rules do not apply. So like, that's why like concessions and other things can take place in the, in the schools. That's the least amount. School districts, of course, can make their policy read more stricter, but you can't go any less than that.
Okay, so that's why like if we have a fun fair or an activity that's in the evenings, you, these rules.
I just have to make sure they don't do it immediately after school. I'm like, you gotta do your 30 minutes.
Got it, okay, thanks. Thank you for explaining that and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Sudoo?
Thank you. Great presentation and great food selection. Nice to see the vegetarian halal options for all the different students that need different options. The question I have is around the nutritional information that's on the website. I have parents who've asked about detailed nutritional information. So I look at mozzarella sticks and the, it just says milk. Is there a way for families to get details as to what's really in that for students that have?
For the type of milk?
For type of milk or what else is in the mozzarella sticks for students that have atypical allergens?
Yes, and I'm gonna refer to one of the stumbling blocks. We had that in and one of the stumbling blocks that happened this last year is we had to change it to like a generic mozzarella stick, because we were getting three different kinds because of supply chain. In the past, we had a specific brand, so we could put the specific nutritional information that you're seeing. And so what we've been trying to put out in our weekly information with our parents or put out there, please contact us directly so that we can look up what came into your school to give you the direct nutritional. Because it has been so hard, things have been substituted so badly. And once you put it up there, that can impact a student with diabetic needs or anything. And we did not wanna go that course and people assume. And so we chose to take some of those details out, because people would hang their hat on that and that maybe create a worst, a worse scenario than reaching out to us. And so moving forward, yes, when I know that we're more in a stable market, where I know what's coming in that back door, cause we hand-select that stuff for certain reasons. And now they've been substituting so many items because of supply chain, it's been really kind of a challenge. So Joanne, like I said, my registered dietitian, she's on the phone all the time directly. So if you do have parents like that, we can immediately get information, cause we know what has come in that day that might not have or been substituted. And I apologize if that information's not getting out to them. That was, at one point, that was on the front of that menu saying, please contact us, because things are changing so rapidly.
So they can get stuff?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
The preservatives, the different types of coloring that's used in foods?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And that's what that, that system truly was, pre-COVID before, you know? And again, I hate making excuses, because the reason we invested in it was because that was like, that was like, that's my favorite part of this whole thing, is that we have this wonderful Nutrislice system where, you know, our parents relied on it, which was great. We shifted that mindset in our community and we really, it was a great tool for us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, this was very informative.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Dinkaloo from TMP Architecture. He will take us through the furniture presentation for the EL2 that's Smith, Miller &amp; Byrd, Phase 3 of the purchase. There's a brief presentation followed by the first read of a resolution that you will vote on next time. And it's for $78,147.82. Mr. Dinkaloo?
Okay, so this is Phase 3. You've seen us a lot on this furniture and this is really an example of us listening to what's happening as furniture comes in and, and trying to address needs with some of our positive variants on, on previous phases. So this Phase 3 handles some special ed spaces, English language learning space. So this Phase Three handles some special ed spaces, English language learning spaces, itinerant staff spaces at Byrd and Smith. At Erickson Field and Holting, there were just, you know, they, they have most of their furniture from, from last summer, but there were some storage needs that they needed. So at, here's at Byrd with those spaces, really just the horseshoe and kidney tables to, to meet with the students and some teacher desks, student desks in a few of the spaces. At, at Smith, similarly in two spaces. Here, they, instead of having multiple horseshoe tables, they wanted some just rectangular tables for those spaces. And then some, some smaller spaces for itinerant staff and English language learning spaces, mostly the kidney or the horseshoe tables and, and some teacher desks at Byrd and then Smith. They have a little bit larger English language learning space. And then these are the, the mobile storage spaces for Erickson Field, Holting, for the maker space, a lot of those materials that they have for maker spaces. And so each school there, each of those three schools will get eight additional storage. They have some of these storage in the classroom, but these will be for their, for their maker spaces, so. Any questions on?
That's all we have for furniture this evening. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Anybody have questions?
No questions.
Just to provide some context for the people that are watching at home, this equipment that we ordered for Erickson Field and Holting, this comes from the same bond money and we encourage the, the schools to put in the orders for the things that they need, knowing that if they have a future purchase need and we have bond money that's left, we can use that to be able to support those things. So we're not having people buy extra furniture thinking that this is their only chance that they have to buy furniture. So it's worked out well with this and this is an example of how we added some additional equipment or additional furniture that was needed in the elementaries that we did last year and earlier this year. And this was discussed extensively in FNO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm back up here for a couple of presentations really quick. With me this evening, Bowman is here from Great Northern. He has assisted us in this endeavor. I'll take you through a brief presentation we have on a potential purchase of property. We'll take a, take a few moments to do a little bit of history and where we came from, how we got to this spot, and then where we'd like to go in the future. And then after that, you'll see a first read of a potential property purchase. Can you make that a slideshow, please?
Maybe.
So here's some of our existing conditions. So this is the maintenance and operations building at 987 Mill Street. Here's the front of the building, the brick facade in the front, and then at the back of the building, there is a temporary structure attached to for additional office space and Thank you. Here is our curriculum and instruction, some of the department. In the upper left-hand corner is the Tanger Center Building on Five Mile Road, just west of Hagerty Road. And then the small building there on the right is the Trusdell. It's two classrooms and two offices that it's really, some storage for our technology department adjacent to Field Elementary. So our 2020 bond program, if you remember, we started some visioning work in 2018 and then in 2019, we really kind of honed in on what, what we wanted to do. And so our 2020 bond program included a combined maintenance and IT building, looked at approximately 9,000 square feet, looked at an estimated budget of about $2.2 million at about $250 per square foot. This building was to be located off Joy Road near the existing salt barns and it did not include any furnishings or fixtures. It was assumed that they would take those from their current facilities. And so this is a brief, a little mock-up that we did for the envisioned 20, well, we looked at originally 11, or 9,000 square foot. Remember, Christensen was helpful in her day job to point out that we needed additional circulation space and we looked at some additional folks that might work here. And so even at a two-story building, we were not sure that it was going to meet our needs. And so some of our issues, challenges, and concerns we had were just the size and the, in the location. We needed collaboration between our technology teams that are located currently in multiple buildings across the district. We didn't believe the building was going to be large enough to house all the people that needed to work there. We continue to need staging and storage spaces for both our technology and our maintenance staff, as well as having adequate parking, space for delivery vehicles, a loading dock, and all the new stormwater requirements that are now required of new construction. So then we looked at what would be our alternatives to constructing a facility at, at a location. And so we looked at maybe we should purchase a building, the purchase price is about $96 per square foot, which is far less than the build, building construction rate of $250 per square foot. We looked at even the expansion of the size of the facility needed and at that, construction cost, it would be in excess of $5.7 million. We also looked at what we're experiencing currently, as you heard Kristen, Kristen talk about the, the supply chain issues, we're experiencing those in the bond projects as well. And so we're currently experiencing about 15% to 20% overage in our bid packages for the last about year, year and a half. And we don't really expect that to go anywhere but up in the foreseeable future. And if we looked at the escalated costs, it would be over $6.9 million to build the size that we were envisioning, not to mention the time and the, the time to construct, design, and move forward. So Mr. Bowman was kind enough to bring us this listing. It's at 14967 Pilot Drive. It is off Five Mile and just east of Beck Road. It's 37,410 square feet, purchased, price of $3.6 million and built in 2002. These are just some of the interior photos. The lower is a hallway that runs through the center of the building and really separates it into a north and south section. There are open office spaces throughout and those, a picture there of them. The lower left is a conference room within the building. The upper right is the kitchen area, staff lounge area. Okay, and then we have a work room slash storage area, as well as the technology head end room, we'll call it. So here are some of the features of that building, built again in 2002, 37,410 square feet, has onsite parking of 78 shared spaces, and it is in an industrial park, off Pilot Drive. So you can see Five Mile Road is to the top of the drawing, Beck Road is to the left-hand side. And so we do have neighbors to the north and to the south, but it is an existing facility, again, built in 2002. Here's the floor plan with those open office spaces occupying a majority of the, of the, of the building, a lot of, a loading dock, which is exciting for the maintenance and IT department as we continue to entertain shipments for both furniture, as we heard earlier today, and technology, all our Chromebooks, all our laptops. We just don't have the, that kind of facility with a loading dock at this time. Here's how it sits on the site, again, neighbors to the north and to the south with parking spaces both in the back and in the front. So we have conducted several board closed sessions, as is allowed under attorney-client privilege. We fully executed a non-binding letter of intent on January 11th. We've then just showed an interest in purchasing the property and we've been conducting some pre-purchase inspection activities on the site. Here's a list of all the pre-inspections that we have already completed, including an appraisal, a survey, some general inspection reports, as well as some critical systems, roofing inspections, parking lot inspections, an electrical system inspection, as well as a Phase One environmental. The recap of those activities is the due diligence activities have been completed at this time. The inspections included, did include some deferred maintenance items totaling up to about $180,000 in estimated costs. Nothing out of the ordinary, given the age and the use of this building to date. And they have graciously included the furniture fixtures, technology equipment, open office cubicles, dust chairs, tables that you saw in those pictures are included in the purchase price. So the open items was a technology item that we had that was actually completed. Mark Saucer, our Director of Technology, gave us some additional information on Friday that evaluates both the technology infrastructure within the building, as well as he's in negotiations or just talks with a neighboring public school who is also located less than a mile away for some joint data to be fully wired. It is estimated to be $160,000. I don't know why this one is not updated, but the one I have is, and I apologize, but this, this page was updated last Friday. So the estimated cost to become fully wired in all its various parts and components is about $160,000. So the positive outcomes, in order to take advantage of this opportunity, would be the, all the collaboration activities for both the curriculum and instruction departments, the technology departments, and the maintenance staff. So they'd be in one space in order to collaborate and discuss, especially with all the bond projects that we envisioned to go forward in the next eight or so years. An enhanced space for professional development, as you saw that large conference area, a reduced, a reduction of our rental space, that we currently rent space to house some of our plumbing supplies at 525 Farmer. A staging and storage area for our curriculum materials, when we get our textbook purchases, our technology equipment, and our maintenance equipment. Swing space for the furniture, some of which you heard earlier this evening, as well as the potential disposition for older buildings. So why now, and maybe Mr. Bowman can answer any questions you might have on this, but we've just seen that we're in a place in the marketplace right now where it's just very expensive to build. It's just way cheaper to purchase existing and there's just not a lot of spaces available. The marketplace is just so tight right now that we believe, based on the appraisal value of the property, that this price is reasonable, especially given all the furnishings and fixtures that they have graciously included in, the need for professional development space and large instructional space, or especially with our staff, and there's just very little places we can do so. Enhanced flexibility with all the different staging and storage issues that we have with both furniture and equipment, and then all the, the general collaboration between curriculum and instruction and technology particularly. We would have to use general fund dollars because, as you know, during the bond program, we did not envision purchasing property, so that is not included in your bond language, which is a requirement in order to purchase with bond dollars. So we can't use bond dollars, it has to be general fund dollars. But it would save the district between $2 and $3 million to take advantage of this opportunity rather than, or building a, a facility. So our next steps is tonight in having an open and honest conversation about that with you and the community. First reading is the purchase agreement included in the board agenda for this evening, the Board of Education's final decision on April 26th, and then to execute a purchase agreement would be our next steps. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Anybody have any questions?
Just to provide one piece of comment for everybody here, and Ms. Pia spoke about this, is we've seen substantial increases in our construction costs. So the projects that we initially budgeted for our bond programs are coming in substantially higher. And so that causes us some, some anxiety on that, both in terms of even doing the original project that we'd intended here, but it's also the ability to execute the programs that we wanted to do for the, the buildings throughout the district. So, you know, as much as we prefer to spend bond dollars for these types of capital projects, this will actually free up bond dollars for us to use for the other projects and more importantly, it'll provide us a facility that really brings those people together. And that's, we think, a big option for, or a big opportunity for us because we, having our curriculum and instruction, as well as technology teams together in one place as we do more technology work, this is one of those things that we discussed extensively in FNO and, you know, we're, we're supportive of this process. And some of these costs that have been identified here, like the cost to wiring, that's what we anticipate as the maximum cost. There's a, a potential to reuse some of the equipment and the other wiring that's there that may be less than that.
The only thing I would, I would ask is that if it moves forward and we choose to purchase this property and if there's any work that has to be done to the building and we have to get subcontracts, that we make a commitment to ensure that minority business owners and women business owners have an opportunity to bid for any of that work that would happen in that building. So I just want to put that out there in advance.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chestang. And that's actually one of the things we've had a number of conversations on, that that needs to be proactive in what we're doing for all of our bid projects, not just this one.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, the money we're using to purchase is, is coming from where now?
General fund.
General fund. So we do have enough for that and we're not adding to our mortgage?
No.
Okay.
We have sufficient fund balance to, to both meet our board requirements and all the things that we need to do, including the expectations that we would have coming in, in this budget process.
Anybody else?
Maybe if this was mentioned, what's the timeline as far as when you would expect staff to move in and things be ready to go for the staff?
Mr. Bowman can speak to this, but this building is in excellent, was cared for well and is in excellent condition, so we're hoping with the execution of the purchase agreement that we could close in May or June and be in by July 1.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you're still up.
And I'm still here. It is budget season and so you're going to see a lot of me in the next couple of months and I apologize for that, but such is the time of year. This time, I am here to discuss the financial fiscal year 2223. Sounds like a long way away, but it really isn't. And so we're going to talk about the budget assumptions and those that we have come to discuss in the FNO meetings so that you are fully aware of where we are in the process and we will go forward from there. I'm going to talk a little bit this evening about the state budget outlook, the foundation allowance, the enrollment, and the budget assumptions that we've used to date as we start that process. So what I wanted to start off with you today is a graph from the House Fiscal Agency that was produced in January of 2022, which just shows you the school aid fund as it's a part of the entire state of Michigan coffers. And so you always hear about the different pieces of the state budget. I just wanted to show you that, you know, we're really about 25% of the school aid share of the total state budget. Health and Human Services has the largest share and school aid is number two. The school aid fund, SIF for short, if you took that pie, you know, we always talk about the lottery and doesn't the lottery support schools? And it does, but it's not a... And it does, but it's not a majority of the share of the School Aid Fund. The largest piece of the School Aid Fund is state sales tax. And so everything we buy and we purchase at 6% has an earmarked place in the School Aid Fund. Secondly is the income taxes that everyone pays when they file their taxes. So, you know, everyone who has a wage and a salary, even those who are on unemployment or on social security, a partial, if, if you go and if you file your tax returns and you have your income taxes withheld from your pay, it all goes into that green section at 22%. And then the state education tax, that's the tax that's on your tax bills that comes to your door either on July 1 or December 1. And in this district, we 100% collect our ta- our school taxes on July 1. Then the lottery transfer, use taxes and real estate transfer taxes and the like. How that works into the School Aid Fund is, you know, under the foundation allowance formula voted on by the legislature in 1994, is that we are a minimum funded school district. And so currently, it's for 2122, we are at $8,700 per full-time equivalent membership student. And so you'll see this graph as it depicts where the foundation allowance has gone. And so if, under the School Research Collaborative, they determined that a, at, under the current regulations, that a student in the state of Michigan, it would really cost about $9,590 per full-time equivalent student. And so if we were to collect from the state that amount of money, the difference between that and 8,700 is approximately $890 per full-time equivalent student. And if you do the math, it's in excess of $14 million. So it's not just one year, $14 million, it's all the years that we've been, you know, under this new foundation allowance funding formula. So it's just a lot of money that we are still not funded to the extent that we're expected to educate in the state. Here's our historical financial information from an enrollment standpoint. Enrollment in my world is the membership formula, full-time equivalents. When Mr. Tiskowitz talks about enrollment, he's talking about head count. There's a slight difference because not all students attend all day. And so those adjustments are taken advantage, are taken into account when the state funds our, our state aid under the foundation allowance formula. That red section there in the 2021 school year, that was the super blend. It was a one-year reprieve from the reduction in enrollment statewide. So if you recall, during the pandemic, during the height of the pandemic, the state really, we'll call it, lost about 43, 44,000 students that are still not returning. So either they went to other states or they were homeschooled, but they're not counted currently in the state enrollment projections. We do historic look-sees at our enrollment, we also do a projection analysis. But this, that was the one year, the red there. The current year, 2122, we're at about 16,400 full-time equivalent students. So every year we have done an analysis with the help of Stanford. It's Dr. Fred Ignatovich. He looks at all our demographics of birth rates and studies, all those different pieces of his analysis. Looks at house, what do you call it, new home starts, where people are located, how many new houses are built and where they are and where they're located and what are the likelihood of that house being sold to a family with students that would then attend our school district. And so we start with every year, our fall 2021 count. We roll those forward and that roll forward is the first graders going to second grade, the second graders going to third grade, et cetera, et cetera. And so we started with 16,419, we got to 16,188. You're like, oh my goodness, we lost 300. We didn't lose 300. Our graduating seniors are 1,400 plus and our incoming kindergartners are about 1,100 plus. So that's the differential now between the fall and then the next year's count. Stanford also does his demography in three or four different ways. He looks at most likely, he looks at a high and a low, and then he takes some kind of average. And so you'll see those numbers there, but he does not account for schools of choice, our I P S E P students and our shared time students. So if you took those 322 into account, you'd be within 10 of where we are in our original projections. He'd be at 16,198 and we're, our initial, initial projection is at 16,188. So our budget assumptions for revenue then fall from those enrollment numbers. So we use 16,188 currently. It's 90% of the fall count and 10% of the previous spring. It's about a 211 F T E drop year over year. Our foundation allowance formula under the governor's proposal is currently an additional $435 per full-time equivalent student. The House and Senate have yet to come out with their proposals. We believe those will come out closer to the May consensus revenue estimating conference, which has not been established, but is usually about mid-May. The enhancement mileage will increase about 2% as it always has. However, it will be reduced this year, 2223, by about 22 and a half percent. That's an estimate given by Rain Risa because it's the first year where we now have to share the enhancement mileage with other non-public schools.
Other public schools?
Charter schools.
Other public schools? You said non-public.
Yeah, other non-public. Yeah, oh, they're public, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Not traditional.
Sorry, non-traditional, thank you. Our expenditures assumptions are as follows. We have a wide variety of negotiated collective bargaining agreements. So none of them, I don't think are, we, we had one out, is extended. So I believe we're set for staffing and based on the board-adapted class size guidelines. MIPSERS, which is the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System, that is a mandated gift to the public schools retirement fund. That is a base rate currently of 28.23%. That means for every dollar that is paid to a staff member, 28 cents goes into the MIPSERS retirement fund. The hard cap, which is the limit to which you can, under P A 152, that's Public Act 152, contribute to the health insurance of your staff, is an increase of 3.7% over the prior year. We have some contracts with custodial and transportation providers. We have some utilities. We have been able to do a long-term buy on those utilities for natural gas and electric, which have frozen the rate by which we are purchasing that commodity with the help of executive energy, however fuel costs. So you know, when you go fill up your tank, it's very expensive, same with us. So we've increased the budget for fuel by about $100,000. And then our teacher retirement savings, we're tracking at, hopefully by the end of, the end of this year, we'll be up at 15. We're at 13 today and so we're hoping that, that teacher retirement savings estimated at 15 will be appropriate. So next steps for this is to then do the deep dive in all the federal funds because you have staff costs returning to the general fund that were from S R 2. And then you have staff costs going to S R 3, 11T, that's the section it was adopted, for learning loss in those focus groups. So economically disadvantaged, English language learners, you know, there were certain groups of the state of Michigan that has to be spent or costs done to help with the learning loss in those focus groups. And then we'll identify qualified supports that can be moved out of the general fund in addition to shore up or to spend the federal funds under 11T. 11T was the amount where, remember, we had a equalization payment, quote unquote, of 1,093 to make us equal with all the others. Ours though have a little bit of requirements on, because of our free and reduced count being about 20% in district. So this is where we start the budget process. In two weeks or a week and a half now, we will go with our administrators and we will go through the transformations process and then we'll bring you back all the other information.
Next slide's got the.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, timeline, yeah. So here we are, we're on the 12th of April already. And then the 19th is the budget, May 5th will be at F and O to talk about the proposed budget. May 10th, we'll have an initial presentation, then we have our public hearing and then the final vote. As you know, the Uniform Budgeting Act requires that you vote on a budget by June 30. Unfortunately, I'm going to tell you, you're probably not going to know the foundation allowance formula and you're probably not going to know what the enrollment will be. Fun times, but that's because the state's fiscal year is a different fiscal year than ours. Ours is June 30 and the state's is 930. So I'm told that we, we may or may not know at the May crock, but they may or may not vote till September. Thanks very much for your time. I know it was very long having four presentations and I appreciate your patience.
Mr. Brooks, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Oh, okay. Ms. Chesting? Okay, Ms. Christensen?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Keough?
I just wanted to point out that the state budget, I'm sorry, the, sorry, the School Research Collaborative estimate was from 2018, that's 9590 in 2018. If we were to adjust that for inflation, that would be $10,974 today. So we're still $2,000 under to provide an adequate education.
For a general education student.
For a general education student. So, you know, it, we need, if we're going to provide an adequate, we're doing a great job with the money that we get, but this is a challenging environment from a funding perspective.
Ms. Doo?
Need to get to the state level to make those changes. No questions.
Mr. Wilson?
No, just, just more of a comment. I think one of the things that we recently saw is we had a great response to a school of choice. And so, you know, I, I think one of the things that the board should put on its radar is as we look at the numbers for next year, I think we approved 250 slots, if I believe, and we had about 500 or a little shy of 500 applications. And so, you know, I think that's something that we should look at. Do we put more effort in to promoting for a school of choice? So that we can accept more students into the district. Obviously, if it's a destination, you know, district, I think that that's powerful. And so I just wanted to flag that as we look at these numbers as a potential solution.
One other thing I want to call out on the school of choice is that it's actually based upon, quote unquote, empty spaces that we have. So there may not even be 250 spaces available. It's the, if you had 15 students in a classroom in a particular school, that it's to fill up to that capacity of that, you know, 26 students at whatever that level is. So in some cases, it's, it's filling in the gaps that are there to help us to maximize our, our resources in that process. There certainly is a chance for us to have a conversation as to whether we'd be willing to add staff to support school of choice and I think that's something we should consider.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we are on to communications and marketing with Mr. Brandon.
So if, if, if I may, before we get started, just one question. Once again, I know all the board members did get a chance to, to review in advance. Definitely liked the, the layout of the presentation with the first few slides as far as tying it. One, helping us understand who our partner is, two, tying it to the dynamic plan, things of that nature. But as far as getting into the specifics, as far as like fonts and colors and you're not going to do that tonight, correct? Okay, perfect, thank you. All right.
Today's a very high-level overview.
Okay, all right, perfect, all right, thank you. I just, all right, I, I just wanted to clarify the beginning of your presentation versus interrupting you in the middle.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
We've got about an hour and a half planned.
Right, 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 right. Because I've, I've helped develop, well, you know, I've been a part of developing websites. I know you can go down a rabbit hole, so thank you.
The temptation is there to present every aspect, but no, we will not do that. Very high-level overview for sure. So good evening, it's, it's so exciting this evening to present a long overdue project for our district that will best serve our students, our staff and our community, which is the new and improved official P C C S website. This product, project is uniquely overdue. Our current website wireframe launched in summer of 2015. It's going to turn seven this summer. And in website life, that is more than a life. It's longer than it should be. And obviously, you know, we've had a few things happen that have postponed this project, but we are so looking forward to this. We know that this is going to be a great enhancement to our district. When we look at the many, many ways that this project connects the dynamic plan, to Trustee Wilson's point, we could have had 50 slides connecting the new website to the, to the dynamic plan, but we have one. But it really connects to all areas of the district when you think about it. But up here, you could just see a few things. We talk about, you know, celebrating academic, academic achievement. The district website is a key part of that. And more than anything, strengthening our connection with the community. Staying connected with our community so our community can best stay connected with us. The district website is a very important home for that work. We want really quickly to take you through the homepage of the new website, kind of a staging version of it. Mr. Tiskowitz, if you could go and play on that. What you're going to see here is just kind of the new site, what people will see when they hit P C C S K 12 dot com. You'll notice at the top, we went from eight menu items down to five. We'll talk about that. A nice, large picture guiding the homepage area. Five large buttons that we have full flexibility of, that we can change as we go and change as needed for the district. A nice features area with rounded images. Our news item now, instead of scrolling up and down, it scrolls side to side. And they're all accompanied by large images, large attractive images to invite the eye and tell the story of the news item. You can go to more news there too. A nice events area where we can fully promote our event with education-based images like those rulers. P C C S By the Numbers, a very flexible image area right now where we can change that to different needs. Our schools, a nice inviting place for people to find their school website, unlike what we have right now in our top bar. An excellent connection to our P C C S YouTube channel with our video area, including Board of Education meetings. And of course, at the bottom, link stories, social media outlets and other links. Flexibility is a word I will use a lot because this wireframe, unlike the one we currently have, allows us to really use any of those elements for any needs that we have specific to the district at that time. P C C S By the Numbers is a great example. Right now, it's a feature area where we can substitute different numbers that might be interesting to our community. But there may be times the district, we want to change that and enhance it with some other content. This site, unlike our current site, gives us the flexibility to do that and we are so excited about that for sure. Kurt, if we go back to the slides? Go back to Adobe. At the bottom. There you go. Right there. Perfect, all right. The next slide actually has a six-minute video from Aaron Thames, who's our project manager with our partner Granicus. We are not going to show this right now, but we do recommend that Board of Education members, members of the community, if you want more detail about the website from our Granicus partner, please check it out. It's six very worthy minutes explaining directly from our partner, some of the enhancements and improvements of this site, some of the work and methodology that went into the development of this site, straight from our partner. So that's available for those who'd like to watch it, we recommend it, if you want to learn more specifics about the site. Really quickly about our partner though, Granicus, this is our, our current website partner. We're really excited to continue the relationship with Granicus for a few reasons. First and foremost, they are experts in what's called UX design. Now that might sound like website jargon, it is a little bit, but really it refers to a really important thing, which is user experience design. This design philosophy puts users at the center of the design. It really focuses on what's best for user navigation, what's best for findability and what's attractive to a user in terms of the website. They're trusted, they do a lot of websites, 2.5 million users visit Granicus websites daily. They provide excellent support. This is one of the real highlights of the experience that we've had with Granicus. 24/7 with fast response times to help us out when we need it. But one of the really important things about staying with Granicus that cannot be ignored is the stability. We have 50-plus content managers in P C C S in terms of our website. You know, sometimes there's probably an assumption that just everything runs through our department. Not at all, we have content managers at the. We have content managers at the building level, at program levels. We have 50-plus people who are responsible for managing content on the site. This allows for the continuation of the use of our current content management system. This is a big deal. This means that our content managers will not have to learn a new system, but instead will use the same system, just to have a much, much better product that they're sending content to on the front end of the site. So we love that stability. We know our content managers love that as well. A timeline, really, community voice has guided this work, really from the launch that came in 2015. The items that are in bold on this timeline really reflect community voice. Different surveys that were launched, different studies. We actually partnered with University of Michigan back in January of 2019, School of Information, where we did a full study of the website. This really helped us enhance some of our ADA compliance, which is a real strength of our current site. Couple key moments here. In June of 21, when we started the process for this redesign, we went through a data collection phase. This was a very comprehensive approach. This included a fresh website survey, but it also included user testing, where Granicus took users, gave them a specific task to do on the website, and watched as they found, as they pursued that task. This gave us great insight to some of the roadblocks of our current site that we can improve on with the new website. We also did heat mapping. This is excellent technology. This is where you can follow a user as they search for things on the website, and it actually produces a visual that shows their whole track of their mouse. What did we find? Too much clicking, too much navigation, too much confusion on where to find certain things. Both the heat mapping and the user testing showed us we need to minimize some of our content. How do you do that? With data. So we looked at a lot of our current usership data. What are the most popular things? What are the most high-traffic areas of our website that users currently look for? And make those the forefront. Think about it a little bit like it's a zero-based budget. You know, you're starting from the most important, and you're building around that. That's how we built this website, based on that current data. It's extremely important of a redesign is to figure out why are people going to your site? So that data collection phase was very, very important. If you look at the bottom, you can just see some of our future areas to this. Our new website soft launch will be on June 1st. It's going to give us an opportunity to get some time with the site being live, but also the flexibility of a low-traffic time in June, and especially in July, for us to get feedback, gather a lot of community voice from students, from staff, certainly from community, and make improvements, little tweaks between June, July, and get ready for our full-scale launch in August, which is one of our highest-traffic times of the year, and, and have great confidence that that site is ready for the traffic that will come in August. So we have a nice plan that just continues to evolve community voice as a key, key part of this particular relaunch. One real quick aspect that just directly comes from that is our navigation. So one of the improvements, as mentioned, that we made is the main navigation bar at the top went from eight menus to five menus. This will make information easier to find because there's less repetitive content. Again, we used analytics to guide what those most important areas are, and we, that's going to minimize the site and simplify the experience for our users. We've gotten feedback for years that it's hard to find some, certain information on our site. This is a way to fix that for sure moving forward with our new redesign. And the search bar will continue to provide an incredibly important part of our site. We are a large, complex school district with a lot of information on our website. That search engine is, is still a very important part of it. That'll be front and center. So if you look at the redesigned focus areas, really three things. Accessibility, navigation, and attractiveness. These are the three things we went to Granicus and said, hey, if we're going to remain in this partnership, we need an exceptional experience in these three areas for our users. And with their UX design background and expertise, they were able to work with us on that and provide these as part of our new wireframe. So for accessibility, whether it's WCAG standards or ADA compliance, this website will have the highest standard of compliance with all aspects of accessibility. Taking a step further for us, we've developed a good relationship with the Office of Civil Rights, with the Department of Education. And we're actually meeting with them this week to go through the new staging website, get feedback from OCR on any changes that need to be made. Those changes will be high-priority updates for us before we launch. So it's been a great relationship. We're grateful for the feedback we've already, already gotten, and we look forward to them spending a lot of time with this new wireframe, this new website. Lastly, when it comes to translating languages, this is strength of our current site for sure. We have a, a button that really translates into many different languages. Granicus, with their new designs, has actually made the decision to just rely on Google Translator for the website. That's not enough for us at PCCS. We want to make sure and continue to have that one-click function on our website. So what we're doing, we're going to add on a, a widget, which is, works with a company called Bablick. That's going to provide limited languages with a one-click function. A widget, by the way, is a button on a website that goes to an external area, and that's what Bablick is going to provide for us. So that's a one-click function for unlimited language translation for this website. So it's not only going to be what we currently offer, but even more because it's truly unlimited languages. So we're, we're enhancing our language translation abilities on this site. ADA compliance on our font sizes, our color ratio, that gets into the color of, of things against the background. We are going to a white background on this website. You know, when we launched in 2015, we were trying to be innovative, to be different. So we have a black background on our current site. Our white background allows for our color ratios to be really good. We're over the minimum requirement. Simple, easy-to-read fonts that are really easily readable across all device types. Extremely important in 2022. As the data shows us, most people are actually accessing our website on a phone. And so we would need to make sure that we're picking fonts that are good across all device types. Navigation, one of the really key improvements of this website is that the top bar, the navigation bar, which is sort of the main hub of navigating the website, will travel with you as you scroll down the page. Some of the feedback we got through our community voice is that there's too much scrolling. You have to scroll down to see something, then you have to scroll back up to get to the main bar. Then when you open that main bar, it's so huge that it takes up a lot of areas, and you're scrolling in and out of it. This, this new design will have a main header that travels with you as you go down the site. So all you have to do to move up very, move up in a very, like, short amount, and be able to open up that header up to your options. So that's a huge enhancement for this website that we're really excited about. We also have an I want to section that'll have easy access to actionable items. For example, during school of choice application season, we can put in here a one-click area to get to that school of choice application. Same with registration. So we can change this throughout the rhythm of our school year to make sure that we're accommodating families with a very easy way to do these actionables, whether those are forms, whether those are surveys, whether those are applications, all those activities that our website provides. For attractiveness, again, a really new light, bright feel with that white background. The updated mobile site is something we're really excited about. We actually updated our mobile site last year. It's one of the things we were able to do with our current site. Mobile sites now, really, the taste of users is to make them look a little more like apps. Large buttons, clear paths on what you want to find. So we have 16 different buttons that are really easy to lay out, and that is based on data. So we can find our top 16 areas of the website, translate those into images on our mobile site, and it really looks and feels like a mobile app, which is really good. Users appreciate that for sure. So it's a clearer, simpler feel on both the desktop site and the mobile site. For attractiveness, of course, district branding, but we did mix in some yellow with this new redesign, just as an accent color to kind of keep things fresh and a little bit playful. Rounded corners on our, on our images on this new website, which helps the page to feel more modern, especially compared to our current site. And then we incorporated classroom-inspired images to really support a student-friendly website. The images of the pencils and the rulers and things like that, the dotted lines. We really wanted this website to reflect the learning, the amazing learning that goes on in our classrooms every single day, in the look and in the feel. That is our overview of this new and improved PCCS website. We look forward to bringing this to our community starting in June, and we can't wait to receive more community voice to make sure that our community gets the website experience that they deserve. Happy to take any questions or feedback at this time.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I was wondering about the accessibility with languages. On the, the top page, is there just like one button that you can click and put in your, what language that you'd like?
On the new site or on the current site?
On the, on the new site.
Yes, yes. There will be a button on there that's clear that will be able to translate into unlimited languages.
And also, are the, the lettering and the numbering, or the lettering changed with the, the language? The, the written stuff on the website, it's, it's going to change to a different language.
Yes.
What about any kind of audio or anything like that that comes up? Is, will that be, be the new language or with subtitles or something like that? So whoever's watching can understand what they're?
It's a good question. So all of our audio and video runs through YouTube. And I know that, so we use whatever YouTube offers inherently. I know they offer closed captioning inherently as part of their service. So that, yeah.
You're relying on the other?
Yep, yep. We run everything through YouTube, really, for that reason.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Chastain?
No questions, except for as a parent in the district, can I say I'm so excited about, about a new website? Because I'm one of the parents that just threw my hands up and gave up. So I'm excited about the new website and the intentionality about making sure it's not only user-friendly but accessible.
For sure.
So thank you so much.
Appreciate that very much. Yep, we're excited as well.
Ms. Christensen?
Yeah, I, you took the same words like right out of my mouth. As a parent, I'm just so excited for our new website and to be able to have some simplified, accessible information. And I think it's really smart, too, to focus on, you know, the mobile devices, too, because so often we'll run into some sort of event and trying to look it up on the phone, or who do I need to contact? So I think that's really an important piece. So thank you for, for your presentation, and I'm excited for the, for the, for the new site.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Keough?
So echo my fellow board members' comments. I am very excited about this, much like others that given up actually finding anything. I just search in Google, and then Google takes me to the page, which brings me to the question. If we did heat maps monitoring the existing site, the existing site, for many people, myself included, is really, really hard to navigate. I almost think that that doesn't matter as much as what page you ended up at. So are we focused on only monitoring the existing site? Or are we gathering the data for where people, the pages that people specifically visited, and making those the most prominent things that we do?
Yeah, the fourth kind of prong of the comprehensive data that we collected was Google Analytics. So we were just collecting page view data, and that's one of the things that went into it, yeah.
Okay, because I suspect that there's a big difference between what you see of where people go and how they get there.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And then, one of the other things I've seen in a lot of government sites is, and I think it's there with the I want to.
Yes.
The most common things that people want to do, they, they show up there?
Yep.
Saw it at the, yeah, saw it in the upper right-hand corner.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's, whatever, it, you can answer to it.
Sure.
So this I want to is, you know, kind of takes you directly to, I mean, how do we determine what those items were?
It's really seasonal. So for, I think I mentioned, for example, during school of choice season, we would put the school of choice application in there.
Very excited about the redesign. It looks nice and fresh and clean, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Sedu?
Thank you. Yes, as a parent, board member, we've been talking about this for a while, so yeah, the excitement is definitely there. I have a question about the testing, whether you or the company are doing with screen readers. I know you're using, using WebAim to look at the accessibility, but at some point, do you use screen readers to test out the accessibility of the read-alot functionality on the website as well as the documents that are linked to, or linked from our websites, like Google Docs or PowerPoint? Is all of that being tested?
It's a great question. I'd have to check with Granicus, and we will. We will, we could follow up with you on that in board notes, to see the extent of the, the testing. I know that through the ADA compliance, that, that's a, you know, that's the most important part of knowing that your site is going to be compliant with a screen reader. But in terms of how much testing they do and what levels of testing, I can find that out.
Yeah, so we went through this at RISA the last couple of years and spent all of this, exactly what you're doing. And then, just looking at the level of detail in terms of not only are you responsible for your website, but the documents that are linked within the website. And then checking that regularly, because as you have 50, 50 people that are doing uploads of content, every time a document goes up, there's a risk of not having the document be accessible.
Yes, particularly if you use JPGs and PDFs. And one of our practices, we've tried to really be diligent about with our content managers, is to get away from that practice, because they don't translate. But if you use Google Docs and you publish those to the web, or you create shared links, those can-
Even with Google Docs, you've got to create a template. And, you know, I, I can put you in touch with the RISA person who's got all the templates, so you don't have to recreate them.
Cool, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
My question is more around analytics, so, or really a request. Is it possible to provide the, the board with traffic, you know, some basic analytics as far as what, what kind of, how many unique users come, how long they're on the site, things of that nature? And then if you have any projections, you know, so I always like to ask the question, if we do all these things, then what? And so obviously, the answer is we anticipate increased traffic to the site. So can you do some projections on, we launch in August, we should have, you know, some, some increased traffic by this in a quarter and this after another quarter? But just something to benchmark off of so we understand. It's an amazing design, I love it. I love, you know, just echoing what everybody else said. But as we all know, at the end of the day, the end goal is to get more, more traffic to the site. And so what does that look like?
Yeah, more traffic and more engagement with the site. We don't want people, Ms. Chastain, Trusty Chastain shared, people coming and getting so frustrated, they leave after a few seconds. So yeah, and, and the answer is yes, we certainly can. The ready data that we'd have is from our, our data studies that we did during the design. And then we could engage in some of that, too, now, and then obviously do quite a bit of that work when we launch.
Because what, what kind of traffic do we get? You may not, you may not know it off the top of your head, but how, how many unique users do we get a day or a month?
It's a great question, and I'm, I'm not going to pretend like I know the numbers. What I will tell you is that it is so seasonal. If you look at, what we really look at is, is our year-long chart. And you, and it makes sense, but just the amazing difference between our August usership and our July usership. And that's really why we want to take advantage of the month of July to make tweaks, because it's such a low time. But we could, yeah, we can run analytics and, and I agree with you, I think it's a good point. That'll provide us with an opportunity for growth. Yep, thank you.
I'm really excited for this, because like Mr. Keough, I often just Google what I want to know, and then they take me to the page, which is probably not ideal. But, looks nice, thank you.
Great, yeah.
Hurry up.
Thank you.
Did you explain what the X was next to what I want to know? Is that then?
It just closes that.
It's just a close, it's just an internal.
Oh, okay. And the, the MyStar for parents and students, they're kind of, the lettering's kind of small. Is there any way that we can, same size as the other ones, or?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, on the homepage?
You know, on the homepage, yeah. Up at the top, it says MyStar for Student Connect, and MyStar for Parent Connect. Because a lot of, a lot of parents, just, that's the first thing that they go to. And if, you know, I don't know, in my opinion, it should be the same size as the other ones.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, we'll look into it. Yep.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So normally, we do citizens' comments at one time. And normally, people have to put them in the box before the meeting starts. But particularly since we have student, we're, and so tonight, we amended our agenda, and we had citizens' comments at the beginning of our meeting tonight. But because we do like to hear from any students who show up, we're going to allow these next two comments as a one-time-only thing, just for the public at large. So the first one is Maya Joyner. And, um, on the comment, there has the, the student's name. We're not going to say the name in public. Come on up to the podium and give your name and start, but not the other student's name. Thank you.
I'm Maya Joyner.
Can you speak, can you speak into the microphone? Thank, because they're not going to be able to pick it up for later.
I'm Maya Joyner, and basically, I just wanted to go over the fact that what was said was disrespectful and inappropriate in many different ways. And I feel like many, like African-American students in the school at PSEP found that extremely, like, scary, especially being the things that happened. We had a four-hour lockdown, and now someone's threatening us. So it's not really something that should be taken as lightly as it has been. And I feel like that, or I feel like more things should be done to help us, in a sense. Or, like, he needs something to happen with him, because that, it seems like it's too okay. Like, it's letting it go by, and I don't really agree with that at all. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And then Fran Petonik?
I'm not a student, but I appreciate 30 seconds. Hi, I am a family and community member, and I'm just requesting two things that also go with this horrible- that also go with this horrible video that is already harming the mental health of all of our student body. And that is that the board consider a statement to the student about this video. They are already talking about it. It's already, you know, the, it was posted for 1700 to see. Others have been forwarded it. The school board needs to make a comment about the safety of all of our students. And the other is just, I hope that there was a referral to the police and mental health professionals about the student who posted the video because of any impending safety for any of our students. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, we are on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
So you have three final readings in front of you. We discussed each of these at the last board meeting. The first is to consider the approval of the resolution for purchase of bio and honors bio curriculum materials. The second is the consideration of the approval of the resolution for purchase of world language curriculum materials, Mandarin Chinese specifically. And the third is the consideration of the approval for the resolution for the purchase of Word study materials. If you remember, these were the decodable texts that we use with our early literacy programs to help support readers who need some additional support to unlock their content mastery of early literacy and reading specifically.
All right, so first up, we have action item 220461. Consider approval of a resolution for purchase of biology and honors biology curriculum materials. Final reading. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve a resolution for purchase of biology and honors biology curriculum materials. Action item number 22 dash zero four dash 61, final reading.
Second.
It has been moved by Members Sedu and seconded by Member Brooks. We discussed this at our last meeting and extensively in SPA.
Exactly.
All right. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right, the next one is action item 220462. Consider approval of resolution for purchase of world language Mandarin curriculum materials. Final reading. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution of a purchase for purchase of world language Mandarin curriculum materials. Action item number 22 dash zero four dash 62, final reading.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
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 Any opposed say no. All right, the next one is action item 220463. Consider approval of resolution for purchase of Word study curriculum materials. Final reading.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution of a purchase of Word study curriculum material. Action item number 22 dash zero four dash 63, final reading.
Second.
It has been moved by Member Sedu and seconded by Member Brooks that we approve action item 220463. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right, now we are down to future agenda topics. Does anybody have a future agenda topic? You are of course always free to email them during the week. Then we have action item 220464. Consider approval of a resolution to adopt the PCCS 2022 Board of Education Operating Principles. Final reading. And there it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize we'd move that quickly past agenda topics. One, one quick request is, as we look at the incidents that have happened and kind of how we process them, could we have Canton PD come in and, and help us understand how they assess a credible threat? What is a threat, what is not a threat? So that we have a better understanding of how Canton PD thinks about, about these situations.
And towards that, and exactly, towards that end, is it only Canton PD? Or is it based upon where the, the, the threat arises?
I think we need to hear from all.
We, if, unless it's all coming from Canton, then.
No, I think we need to.
If it comes from all of them, then we want to hear from all of them.
All right, so.
Right, so we discussed looking at doing a, just a review over all of the situation and then getting the authorities to come in and help us understand how they assess a credible threat. I think those would be good, two good, really good starts.
All right. All right, so on this, we'll notice that we did make some changes based on, Ms. Christiansen challenged us to have a growth mindset. All right, so does anybody have any questions about this? Any discussion? All right, I am looking for a motion for action item 220464.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to adopt the PCCS 2022 Board of Education Operating Principles. Action item 220464, final reading.
Second.
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Wilson that we approve action item 220464, approval of resolution to adopt the PCCS 2022 Board of Education Operating Principles. And then at some point, we will sign them and have them posted outside of our room so everyone will be able to see them. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right, now we are on follow-up board questions and our questions from the last time. Oh, here they are. Members Sedu asked if a PDF copy of the Business Academy textbooks could be obtained and tested for functionality. Ms. Rail will check on this request. We got that information. And then Members Sedu asked if there were adequate storage space for our schools for the makerspace equipment and materials purchased earlier in the year. And we saw some of that tonight. All right. So the only thing we have really left is we had discussed having, well, Member Wilson alluded to having a closed session, attorney-client privilege tomorrow night at 5:30. Our attorney is able, we have board governance at 6:30. I know that Mr. Keough is out of town. Is everybody else available at 5:30 for a closed session?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. All right, so we will have a closed session at 5:30 with our attorney. Ms. Chastain?
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
Pardon?
I was going to say, is it possible to do it after the, the board session or? And she, Member Chastain.
I don't know. I did not talk to our attorney.
Okay.
Okay, she can find out.
And board governance is at 6:30?
Board, board governance is at 6:30.
Right.
Are we trying to go, come earlier?
Yeah, 5:30 would be tough.
Could, could six?
I could, I could do six.
Because I know we just, what time they open and we have the posting requirement, so we. If we post six and maybe if we need more time, they can stay beyond or we can board governance maybe. Ms. Cross could. I can do six. Is it enough time?
How far is Auburn Hills?
It's about.
At five o'clock?
Eighteen hours, but you have to post meetings still.
It's a long ways.
An hour. Yeah, five, I don't think I could do 5:30.
Okay. So if, if, if it goes longer, then perhaps we can stay after. I, I want to, I want to make sure we respect Ms. Cross's time also, since she's gotten ready. All right, so does anybody have anything else?
So we had, this evening, we wanted to get clarity on the required versus recommended in the.
Into the.
Yeah.
On food brought in for like parties, et cetera? Yes.
And it is, I think it's in the school handbook.
Right. And then Ms. Sedu was asking about testing the websites for the screen reader compliance. And then Mr. Wilson wanted the analytics on the website traffic.
And goals.
And goals.
Yeah, what we're at now and where, where, where we're going.
President McQuaid, can I clarify, is tomorrow night 6 o'clock or 6:30?
It's 6 o'clock for the closed session. We already had a previously scheduled board governance meeting at 6:30.
Got it.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I want to just go back to F for just a minute. Because we kind of moved through the action items, discussion topics really quickly. And I do want to take a minute to thank Jacob Johnson publicly for inviting the board to the show today. He is the president of the Black Students Union. And I also want to thank Scott Mylum for his leadership as one of the advisors. It was a phenomenal show, filled with poetry, songs, dancing, step. And if you all know step, it is an amazing thing to watch, the energy that you see on stage, and of course, the fashion show. The kids were delighted to be presenting on stage and just excited to have all of us there as students. I mean, the auditorium was pretty packed with students and other teachers and family members. So I want to just publicly say thank you so much. And for the students that have other clubs or associations, the board loves to participate and watch all of the great things that you all do. But again, I want to particularly thank Jacob for sending us emails this weekend and inviting us. It was a great show. If it was recorded, I'd love to make sure that we get copies of the recording so we can watch it again if we weren't there, but thank you for that.
That was my question. Is there a video of it that we can watch?
I'll follow up with him and ask him. I'll ask him. He emailed us, so we have his, we have his contact information. All right, is there anything else? All right, then we are at the end of our agenda. It is 9:48. The meeting is adjourned. Have a lovely evening.